All right. Good afternoon, colleagues, friends, and community members. Welcome to the April 16, 2014, System Oversight Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. This afternoon, we will be discussing finance, accounting, and budget. Before we begin, I would like to ask, as always, folks, to remind you, turn off your wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and taping of the meeting. We thank you so much for your patience today. Our agendas are always quite full. We apologize for keeping you waiting. So let's get started right away by having Dr. Anderson please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'd also like for us, please, to take a moment of silence for our friends and family members who have left us. And I want to give particular notice to several in our Prince George's County Public School family. Okun Ntekan, student at Bowie High School; Ms. Mae T. Frost, food service assistant at Glen Ridge Elementary School; and Mr. Michael "Mike" Ford, building supervisor at Potomac High School. To the friends and family of Okun, Ms. Frost, and Mr. Ford, and the communities of Bowie, Glen Ridge, and Potomac, we offer our deepest sympathies and love. People, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, friends. Okay, we'll start our agenda by having Mrs. Berkeley please call the row.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Epps?
Good afternoon.
Ms. Eubanks?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Jacobs? Dr. Kaufman? Ms. Monday? Mrs. Quinteros-Grady?
Present.
Mr. Valentine? Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Boston?
Present.
Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, may I please have a motion to adopt the April 16, 2015, System Oversight Meeting Agenda? Second? Ms. Epps. Yes, we do have public comment today. It's been moved to move public comment on non-agenda items to 3.0. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to adopt the April 16, 2015 Agenda as adopted? As adopted, okay. So yes, as amended. Told us already, moved and seconded, we'll keep going. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the March 26, 2015 Board Meeting Minutes? May I have a second? It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Seeing now where we have one, when we do the vote, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? And Mr. Taylor is gonna abstain for his absence. Okay, let's see, where are we now? I always skip the legislative agenda. I won't do that today. So I will now yield the floor to Associate General Counsel Demetri Tobias for our legislative report. Are you surprised I actually called you up in time?
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you so much. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I come to you with joy after signee die. The legislative session ended officially midnight on Monday, and we are completing our work on reviewing the bills that have passed, and we'll be providing you with a written summary of those that passed and how it will impact our operations next year and onward. We should have the report finished very soon, within the next few days for you, and we will send that out. But in the meantime, I wanted to provide you with an oral report of a few of the highlights from session, or lowlights, depending on the view. And so, we'll jump right into it. I think everyone is aware of, in the final days of session, there was a surprising and disappointing showdown between the legislature and the governor on the budget. As we had reported earlier in the session, the legislature had made several transfers and moves to essentially find a couple of hundred, over a hundred million dollars to restore both education funding, but also some other key priority areas, salaries for state employees, as well as healthcare. And initially, the governor seemed to be at least, you know, perhaps surprised, but by all accounts, it seemed pleased that the legislature had found money elsewhere. But towards the end of the session, he essentially refused to fully fund education for public schools. There was a lot of back and forth about certain, you know, counter-proposals and counter-proposals. The most that the governor had offered at one point was to fully fund education at 75%. But those counter-proposals were rejected by the legislature. So the budget that passed on Monday includes, essentially, it replaces the funding that we would have received for per pupil spending, so that will give us an additional $12.6 million. We already knew that we were gonna lose the $5 million for the net taxable income because that delay, that phase in delay is gonna be implemented for next year. But GCI, GCEI, that $23 point, that $20.3 million was the big-ticket item that was still on the table for us. And the legislature could not force the governor to appropriate that money. That is a discretionary area of spending. So what that means is, the budget that was passed on Monday includes 20.3 million less than we were hoping, or that we would need it for full education funding. Now, there are a couple of things that are important to note. First, there was another bill that was passed in the last hours of session, Senate Bill 183, which was introduced by Senator King, which will mandate in future years, GCEI funding if the governor fails to give school systems less than 100% of funding for fiscal 2016. There's a lot that, obviously, you know, we're waiting for the dust to settle on some things because we just do not yet know whether or not he will have a change of heart and he will decide to appropriate the money. But by his comments, frankly, we're not holding our breath for that. And so if that's the case for fiscal '17 and onward, we would, we and other jurisdictions, I think there are about 12 others who receive this funding, would have full funding, but that still leaves us at a loss for next year. In addition, as I noted, because this is a discretionary area of spending, even though the governor did not officially introduce supplemental budget that would provide this $23 million, he could make some kind of decision, now that session is over, to still appropriate the money. If he did, it would be a wonderful surprise. That's still within his authority to do it, but he cannot spend the money on any other category. So if he doesn't give it to education and to the other areas that were designated by the legislature, it sits in the state's fund, and there'll be a very probably important and potentially contentious discussion next legislative session on how that money should be sent, should be spent. But it is discretionary, and he can't be forced to do it. So that is where we stand as of today on the budget. There is a little bit of good news for us in that there was an additional bill that was introduced and passed, also by, I think this was Delegate Hickson's bill. But this would provide a capital grant. For our system, we would receive about $4.8 million additional next year. This is a grant program for schools that have significant enrollment growth or significant use of relocatable classrooms. So that's about $4.8 million that we would receive next school year, which will be a positive. Moving on to a couple of the major statewide bills, and again, we're gonna be providing you with a detailed list of everything else education-related that passed, but I just want to highlight for you the big ones for our school system and a couple of the local bills that passed. On the statewide bill, the charter schools bill, there was a charter schools improvement bill that did pass both houses. What the bill does, it leaves in major respects the status quo in place, in terms of charter school teachers will have to be certificated like other public school teachers, they will still not receive capital funding, they won't be able to establish a separate collective bargaining unit, and they will still be subject to the authority of the local Board of Education. And the bill actually removes the state board as a secondary authorizer, so everything still has to come for approval through the local Board of Education. But there were some substantive changes made to the law, and I'll just provide a brief summary of those as follows. A major change is now there's a weighted lottery that the local school board can allow, and this would give extra weight to students who fall under the following categories. They receive free and reduced-priced meals, they are siblings of currently enrolled or admitted charter school students, they're students with disabilities, students with limited English proficiency, homeless students, students who attended the charter school the previous school year, and it was operated by the same business or organization. And then there is an opportunity for a geographic attendance area, really a catchment area, that the charter school operator can designate and present to you for approval. And that would allow them to pull up to 35% of their students from that geographic attendance area, you know, surrounding the school. And the intent there was to really give some of the operators more authority to pull directly from the communities where the schools are located, because as you know, charter schools are public schools, and the lottery is open to everyone. So that weighted lottery is definitely a major change for us. And with this, as with every other bill that has passed, we will be taking a deep dive look at all of our policies and procedures in the next few weeks to make changes, and we will be bringing all of that to the board for your approval as well. Also on charter schools, big change. There is now going to be what is called an expanded authority program for any school that's been in operation for five years or longer, and has, and can demonstrate sound fiscal management and student achievement. And by that, that means they would have to present to the board evidence that their students achieve, on average, higher than the, on state assessments or other measurements from the state board than other Prince George's County Public School students. So if they present to this board evidence of sound fiscal management and high student achievement for a period of at least five years, they can essentially apply to this board for expanded authority, which would make them exempt from a majority of the local board's policies. We're not talking here about the requirement for audit, anything related to health or safety or civil rights of students. But we're talking about exemption from, for example, the textbook, any policies regarding textbooks, instructional program, curriculum, professional development, or scheduling, subject to certain requirements. We're also talking about policies relating to a school community council, a school improvement plan, activity disclosure statements, certain class size or staff ratios. There's a list here. And what the charter school would have to do is to provide you with an acceptable alternate means of meeting the intent of these policies without actually being subject to them explicitly. In addition, if a charter school is selected under this program, they could no longer be assigned a principal without their approval. That is a significant change from existing practice. Also, any staff in our system can request to be transferred specifically to that charter school, or the charter school can request certain staff, and they, under the terms of whatever collective bargaining agreement governs, staff would be able to be assigned specifically to that school. Those are, again, those are really unique, new parameters, you know, flexibility that's being given to charter school operators that does not exist now. And it was part of, obviously, all of this is by design, and while much of the more controversial portions of the bill were gutted from what was initially proposed, this was designed to really give operators a lot more flexibility and authority. But everything, like I said, still comes to the local board. So that program would be effective, as with the rest of the requirements of the bill, starting July 1. In addition, there's going to be a funding study that MSD is going to be conducting with the Department of Legislative Services. The final report will be due next October, October 2016. But they are going to be taking a comprehensive look at funding, both for charter schools and other public schools, to really determine how much money is being spent, on average, on, you know, administrative costs, you know, money that's going directly to the classroom, trickling down specifically at the schoolhouse versus, you know, system-wide expenses, administrative costs. It is truly, it's truly a comprehensive survey, and it's gonna take MSD some time to weigh through this. But you'll be hearing a lot more about that funding study and several others that were passed during the session in coming months. But we believe that the intent there, the intent of the funding study, is to get a greater picture of what commensurate funding for charter schools should look like. And so they're looking at, you know, what is the average per pupil spending, you know, at elementary schools in our school district, and middle schools in our school district? And it's gonna, the study will be conducted concurrently with the adequacy funding study that's also being done statewide. So we're gonna have a lot of interesting information to weigh through by October, but you'll be hearing more about that in coming weeks. That's the charter bill. Briefly, a couple of the other state bills that you'll be hearing more about, Senator Pinsky's bill to study assessments. We've been hearing a lot, perhaps both pros and cons, but a lot of feedback from constituents, teachers, parents, about the number of assessments that students are given during the school year, and how that's impacting instructional time. What this bill will do, what the new law will do, is has a commission studying assessments statewide. That's local assessments, state assessments, federal assessments, to determine how many are given, for what purpose, the impact on instructional time, how they're administered, whether or not they're effective. That work is also gonna be done over the course of, actually, this summer and fall, because there's an October 2015 reporting deadline for this information. So they're gonna get started very quickly with this. And this is gonna be a statewide examination, in large part to address the concerns about, as I said, the level of testing that's going on in the classes, and recommendations are gonna be coming back both to you and every other local board, as well as MSD, on potential changes to how assessments are structured and administered, et cetera. There are a lot of components at play, as you know. There's both, you know, federal requirements that we have to deal with, there are state requirements that we have to deal with, and then there's some locally development assessments as well. So that will definitely be something that's gonna be food for thought as the report becomes available closer to the fall. On local bills, a couple of local bills passed, several did not. The ones that passed, this board has supported the Youth Wellness Leadership Pilot Program. If you recall, this bill was designed to expand upon a program you already have in place that's at Blatonsburg High School. It's being run by a nonprofit organization called End Time Harvest Ministries, and it's been very successful at putting together youth-led, or helping to coordinate youth-led health and wellness, advocacy, leadership training, college and career preparation. And so that bill passed, and it's gonna be a three-year pilot to expand that program. We'll be working with staff in coming weeks to figure out how exactly that expansion will look, because there are several options available to the board, but we'll be bringing that information to you shortly. In addition, Senator Currie's bill, this was Senate Bill 622, it establishes an English Language Learner Liaison Pilot Program. MSD actually manages the program, but what it does, what it's designed to do, it's a two-year pilot that's really designed to target resources for ELL learners and their families. In working through the bills this session, our staff had already advised that pretty much we're already doing what the bill requires, so we don't foresee that this is gonna be a major fiscal or, you know, kind of resource impact for us. But we will be looking at the final bill language and coordinating with MSD on how to move forward with it. And then, two other local bills that passed, the Certified County-Based Business Participation Program Bill, which allows you to set aside, to coordinate with the county council, and to establish goals for increasing the participation of county-based businesses. That bill did pass. As did, finally, House Bill 707, which was the bill to prohibit the board from issuing credit cards for use for board expenses. That bill also passed. Bills of note that did not pass, the Turf Fields Bill, which actually passed the Senate, ultimately was not passed in the House. And if you recall, that was the bill that would have required the board to install turf fields at every high school by, I believe it was 2020. That did not pass. The post-Labor Day Bill that we heard a lot about during the beginning of session, especially spearheaded by our comptroller, that also failed to move. As did the New School Construction Investment Act Bill, which would have raised sales tax in our county for the purpose of school construction, renovation, or repairs. Senator Muse's bill, the Property Tax Cap Bill, this was Senate Bill 939, that was introduced about a week or two before the end of session, that also did not move. So it's almost, you know, it's almost laughable, the amount of bills that actually finally moved, when you look at what's introduced, you know, at session. But the reality is, you just don't know, you know, as you're moving through, what will really, you know, get some real movement. And so I just wanted to say, finally, I have neglected to say this every time that I'm up here, I think it's really important for me to just give credit to the wonderful leadership in this school system. You have some of the hardest-working folks in the state of Maryland here, and not only have I been just privileged to work under the leadership of George Margulies and Shawna Battle, who are fantastic, but our staff and just the various offices have been so responsive as we've, you know, reached out to them for information, and we really have to move quickly on a lot of these things during the legislative session. So I wanted to be sure to publicly thank everybody for the way that they help us to get this job done. And so with that, I'll stop and be pleased to answer any questions that you have, and just remind you that we'll be having a final written report to you very shortly.
Thank you so much. Buzz in if you have any questions or comments. We will start with Dr. Kaufman.
Hi. Thanks for your, the report and all the hard work that you and the rest of the team did over this session. Just a question about the charter school bill. My understanding, under the previous law prior to this session, was that the state board really didn't have much authority over, you know, the approval of charter schools, but that there were some changes made in the bill that actually, at least some of the critics were arguing, took away some authority from the state board. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. Before the bill passed, the state board, the language was in there that would allow the state board to be a secondary authorizer. They just never exercised that authority. When a charter, when a charter application was appealed up to the state board, if there were problems, or if it needed to be reversed or reevaluated, the state board would remand back to the local board, and then, you know, the local board would respond accordingly. But the state board actually never exercised that authority as a secondary authorizer. What this bill did was to remove the language in the law that would have allowed them to ever exercise that authority. So it's now only the local Board of Education that can actually issue the charter.
I'll go, I don't see anybody, go on, a quick follow-up to on the charter school.
Sure.
The weighted lottery, the way that, I understand that, that the local board still kind of has the autonomy to decide to implement any or all components of the weighted lottery, is that correct?
That's correct, because that information has to be included in the charter school's application, which can be obviously approved or denied. There's one, with the geographic attendance area, that particular component can be denied separately from the rest of the application by the board. So all of that has to be included in the application.
Thank you. And for existing charter schools, is there, they would just reapply, or they would have to wait till their charter renewal?
As long as they have five years of documented, you know, sound fiscal management and student achievement, I think they would be eligible.
Well, but you don't need five years for the weighted lottery, right?
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the expanded authority, right? It would be up for renewal.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions? So I don't see any other questions. So let me just say, when we, when you came on and joined us and we heard how fabulous you were, you have absolutely proven that beyond a shadow of a doubt. Thank you so much for your thorough.
Thank you, that's so kind, thank you, thank you.
It takes, I know from my day job at NEA, it takes a special person to be up there lobbying, man, that's some serious work, so thank you for everything.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Okay, we'll move on now, we're on public comments. We will do public comments for agenda and non-agenda items. I will remind folks, before we begin, that you have been registered to speak in a public comment forum, where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of the speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanator, with profanity or derogatory terms. You will only be warned once, and we ask if you continue, your comments will be terminated, and you may be asked to leave the meeting. And when you speak to us, please, you're encouraged to use titles rather than names, so to refer to someone as principal and superintendent rather than specific names. And of course, please do leave us a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone. So we have just one registered speaker and a non-agenda item today, Valette Ruffin. Is Valette Ruffin here?
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Rochelle Valette Ruffin. I am very happy to speak here with you all today. I feel, though, that it's unfortunate that I feel like I have to resort to coming to the board with these issues to seek some type of resolution. I prepared this statement, so as I read it, I will have to edit certain things per your notes, so excuse me if I pause at times. So again, my name is Rochelle Ruffin. My parents bought their first home here in Fort Washington in Prince George's County in the early 80s. the early eighties. We moved around a lot and traveled due to my father being military, Army. And then we returned to this area when I was entering into the sixth grade. I attended Indian Queen Elementary School. I had a wonderful teacher, Ms. Lowery, if any of you knew her. I also attended Oxon Hill Middle and Surratsville. I graduated from Surratsville with wonderful teachers like Mr. Anderson. These teachers wanted us to be proud of ourselves and made sure that they provided us with education that we deserved. You could tell that they loved their jobs and understood the influence that they had on students. If any of you know them, I'm sure you'll agree. Today, my daughter attends Potomac Landing Elementary School. She has done so since kindergarten, which also has some wonderful teachers that share the same values and have the same faith in their students as Mr. Anderson and Ms. Lowery did. It also has teachers and administrators who are participating in misconduct, bullying, harassment, and other illegal unethical activities. I know we are all aware of what happened recently in Georgia, where educators were convicted of grade tampering and other unethical activity. Well, I have been reporting the same type of activities since October of 2014 directly to Dr. Maxwell's office. The reason why I started there is because I had experienced it lightly, the grade tampering in other years, but it was typically easily resolved with a discussion with a teacher. This year has been extraordinarily different. I will get back to my statement. I have proven with ample classwork and homework assignments as well as evaluations that a fourth-grade teacher and another teacher have been tampering with my daughter's grades to lower her once-principal's honor roll GPA. Staff and administration have been made aware and acknowledged the constant inaccuracies. After reporting this in October, my daughter and I have become the targets of bullying, baiting, and harassment by students and staff at PLEs. I have filed bullying complaints that have been blatantly neglected, ignored, or improperly handled. My nine-year-old daughter, who used to love school, which is rare to find in children these days, is being called a snitching bee. She is being bullied and taunted by one of her fourth-grade teachers and other staff. Meanwhile, my complaints and filings have been ignored. May I continue?
Continue, please.
Okay. The main thing that has really concerned me is that in January, my daughter, someone, a student, made a bullying comment toward her against, about rape. The principal and the counselors' means of addressing this was to take her into a room, interrogate her on several occasions, and I guess when her story didn't change, they drafted a document stating that these things that she had experienced, prior activities, not even addressing the rape comment, were resolved. They took that word from an email I had sent two or three days prior to the incident stating that issues were not resolved. They had my daughter sign this paperwork or this statement. When I picked my daughter up, she, or I'm sorry, they had her sign it without my knowledge, without consulting me, and so on. My concern is that right now, there's a lot of cover-up going on, and no one is addressing this. My daughter has been experiencing this since October. I have literally sent 20 or 30 emails with supportive documents. I have statements. I have had, my daughters had to seek counseling.
Do you have a bunch of this in your statement, so that we'll make sure we take your statement?
Absolutely.
We'll have to ask you to stop at this time.
Okay, well, again, my daughter has received the counseling. We've sent letters via an attorney, and it has been ignored. I am here today to try to get Dr. Maxwell's attention to meet with you, as I've been requesting since October.
Thank you, I'm going to have to stop now. Thank you, I appreciate it, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Oh, did you give, we want to make sure we have your statement writing. We have it? Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, we'll move on. Now we are on to Discussion Item 4.1, System Oversight: Business Management Systems. Colleagues, I now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of Discussion Item 4.1.
Thank you, Dr. Uvanks, members of the board. Mr. Ray Brown, our chief financial officer, and his staff will provide an overview of the Business Management Services Division.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to share information about Business Management Service operations. The leadership team will provide you with an operational overview of its areas of responsibilities, services, and highlights of some of the exciting initiatives underway. Business Management Services is committed to using the DataWise Improvement Process to enhance operational effectiveness, efficiency, and service delivery. We will begin this afternoon's presentation with Mr. John Pfister, Director of Budget.
Good afternoon. Budget and Management Services provides budget development, budget management, financial planning, and position control for all schools and offices. Shown here is our, what we call our budget year, to indicate how the school system's budget is developed and implemented. The process begins in September with discussions with the CEO to develop system priorities based on system needs and stakeholder input. Throughout October and November, a budget is crafted determining the needs of the entire system, but aligning those needs with anticipated resources. In December, the CEO presents his recommendations to this board for consideration. As we move into January and February, you review the CEO's recommendations, hold several public hearings and work sessions to further craft a budget that is submitted to the county executive by March 1st. The county executive then submits his budget, including that of the Board of Education, to the county council by March 15th. Throughout April and May, the county council and its committees review our budget and hold several sessions with the CEO's staff to answer questions and provide clarification. The county must approve a budget by May 31st, and at this time, final budget is sent back to this board for final reconciliation and adoption. The new budget will take effect on July 1. Throughout this process, the Budget Office provides support by responding to board and council questions, providing additional analysis of relevant data, providing comparison data of surrounding jurisdictions, and other supports. As we move to the next slide, I wanted to share some of the things that we are currently doing and where I see us going. Currently, analysts provide support to every school, department, and organization through budget development, expenditure monitoring, and providing reports and analysis. We are charged with ensuring our budgets and expenditures adhere to all federal, state, and local regulations. We monitor expenditure requests for proper classification within the mandated state categories, and we have begun a review and evaluation process of our internal processes for efficiency, and we hope to be creating fiscal transparency through the use of online resources. I also have a vision for the Budget Office as we move the office forward. I would like to decentralize the budget process to garner more departmental manager input. I want to improve our customer service standards. I want to develop budget documents and tools that meet the needs of staff and governmental agencies. And finally, I want to increase our responsiveness to inquiries, both from internal and external departments and agencies. With that, I would allow, like to introduce Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Kristy Miller, Fiscal Compliance Officer, who will talk to you about the school-based budgeting.
Hi, good afternoon. And it's student-based budgeting. Everything we do should, everything we do is about schools and students. So this is total I chart, I apologize. This is our model that represents about 25% of the county's operating budget that John spoke about. Our biggest drivers in this year's budget was an increase in overall student population, an overall increase in students, for ESOL students, for students that are now identified using a much broader range of data indicators so that we can really drive a lot more dollars into students that have recognized need factors, whether it's academic, whether it's attendance, whether it's overall GPA, and things of that nature. So just broadening the things that we look at when it comes to kids are at risk. Just to use one data point, the dollars that we're funneling specifically to at-risk students increased from $4.5 million to $17.5 million in this year's budget. So with that, I will hand over to Vito Weeks.
Thank you, board, and good afternoon. The Business Operations Department has, covers four basic areas, grants, cash management, spending, and recording and reporting. In the Business Operations Leadership Team is noted on this slide, and this group tries to make sure that there is transparency, provides good customer service, have open communications and strong internal controls. We'll cover briefly the focus of these five offices in the four major areas. First, in accounting and financial reporting, the primary focus is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is essentially the external audit. This has been consistently on time for the past number of years. The office also provides timely and accurate accounting and financial reporting that's used primarily by the Budget Office. It covers transactions and activity for five major areas. The operating budget, also known as the current expense, which covers the general fund and restricted funds or grant funds, school construction or capital projects. And the third major area is the Special Revenue Fund, which covers food and nutrition and also the before-and-after care program. Finally, there's reporting of the OPEB Trust Fund, which finances other post-employment benefits and also internal service funds.
OPEB stands for what?
Other post-employment benefits. And the Internal Service Fund, which is closed out to the general fund. The Internal Service Fund, more or less, covers operations that serve other departments, such as the print shop, the central garage, warehouse, and the Risk Management Fund. I think you have a handout for that. Typically, it's about $40 million. Typically, for the current year, it's down to $38 million. The second area is in Treasury Operations. Treasury Operations focus is basically on cash management, procurement of finance through its lease purchase program, making sure that investments earn income for the school system, and banking relationships, including relations with payment processors such as Harkland. The graph on the, this slide shows, provides some information on liquidity, planning, and control, which is done closely with the county, and it shows, for example, that in the more recent years, because of larger cash balances, requests to the county tend to occur to begin around the first quarter of the year. Another focus office is Accounts Payable, and Accounts Payable attempts largely to ensure timely and quality service, whether for vendor payments or internal payments. For internal payments, they provide funding for a petty cash fund, some change funds, employee reimbursements, and also travel expenses through Oracle iExpense. The Accounts Payable Office also does federal tax reporting on Form 1099 and works closely with purchasing as relates to contract pricing and discounts, and more recently, document management. The graph on this slide shows that invoices are consistently paid within 30 days, more, at least 95% of the time, in August and around December typically. That is lower because of vacations and other factors. Another area is the Grants Financial Management Office, and the office basically tries to ensure that spending of appropriations are maximized. This typically occurs with over 90% of awards being spent. The office also works closely with grant managers and program managers, covers compliance, making sure that the A133 or single audit is completed on time, and serves as an integral part of the long-term planning Bridge to Excellence. The graph on this page shows that federal funds have been declining, and the total spending, while constant, has resulted in a smaller percentage of actual spending to appropriations. The final office in the Business Operations Department is the Medicaid Recovery Office, which is, handles funding of means-tested health insurance funded by both federal and state sources. Over 234,000 claims are processed currently for almost 9,000 students. The office, because of efficiencies, has seen growth of over 44% since 2012. Finally, there are a number of initiatives currently underway to improve performance in the department. One is School Funds Online, which is currently being implemented. It's a web-based accounting solution for the K-12 environment, and we are hoping that this will cut down substantially the number of findings that have been experienced within the school system. We are also moving to a cashless environment using MySchoolBox. Besides the use of MySchoolBox with school lunches and the before-and-after program, we have recently expanded to student activity funds. In the Accounts Payable Office, we have introduced a new technology called AP Forensics to help reduce overpayments, detect fraud, and protect the spend in AP which rarely exceeds $600,000 to $700,000. There's also a document management initiative underway to improve invoice, storage, and imaging, and help reduce cost and time. Finally, there is a web-based Medicaid billing system, which was recently implemented, which converts paper to electronic documents and improves workflows, increases revenue, and improves compliance. Thanks for this opportunity. We'll continue with Frida Hudson, our Director of Payroll.
Good afternoon. I'm also bringing up with me Katrina Burton, who is the new Director of Benefits. Some of the things that payroll is responsible for is ensuring employees are paid every two weeks. We also resolve employee inquiries such as emails, phone calls, walk-ins. We support Prince George County Public School Systems financial reporting in various ways, such as through GAAP, accounting, federal, state, and local laws. We train and communicate regularly with our timekeepers and time approvers to ensure our employees are paid correctly and on time. We meet with our union leaders concerning sick leave bank and benefit matters. And we also approve and monitor employees who go out for extended leaves. The extended leave requests that we handle are Family Medical Leave Act, leaves of absences, and sick leave bank.
Good afternoon. The Benefits Services Office is responsible for administering the group benefit programs, including medical, dental, vision, prescription drug, long-term disability, basic and supplemental life insurance, flexible spending plans for health care and dependent care, and 403B and 457 Thrift Savings Plans. In addition, the Benefits Office assists employees with applying for and entering retirement with the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System. We also facilitate continuation of coverage, also known as COBRA, and monitor compliance with the Affordable Care Act.
Some of our performance measures include correct and on-time pay. Currently, we're seeing that 99.8%. Time card approval, we're reporting for January and February, which is normally our lowest month because of inclement. which is normally our lowest month because of inclement weather and/or holidays. Right now, we're seeing that 99%. For long-term leave rates, our employees are about 6.3% on average. As well as for those who are not compliant, we kind of deny maybe about six, between 5% and 6%.
We are currently in the process of reviewing our benefit offerings with the assistance of an outside consultant, Aon Hewitt, to ensure that our planned offerings are competitive and cost-effective. And we wanted to share a few highlights from these projects. The first being the Dependent Eligibility Verification Project, which is currently underway. This is basically to, a project to ensure that only eligible dependents are covered under our medical and our health plans. The current statistics reflect that out of our 22,000 approximate dependents on our, on our plans, approximately 37% of them have been verified to date. So according to our consultants, we're actually right on schedule. That number might sound a little bit low, but we're right on schedule with their expectations based on how these eligibility verification projects typically go. We're also performing a claims audit to evaluate fees, service levels, and provider quality for our medical, dental, prescription drug, and flexible spending providers. Lastly, we are also reviewing our other opportunities for benefit service options, including our retiree population, looking at products such as employer group waiver plans, otherwise known as EGWIP. And with that, we will turn it over to Brenda Allen with our Purchasing Department.
Good afternoon. The Purchasing Department is responsible for the management and direction of all the district's procurement functions. We offer our vendors an opportunity to compete for our business in a fair and open manner. There are various procurement methods, methodologies that we use to procure goods and services, which includes using cooperative purchasing through consortiums. In FY14, by utilizing a consortium, Prince George's County was able to leverage our buying power. And one example of that is in FY14, we received $74,000 in rebate through the cooperative that we have used for office supplies. Purchasing is facilitating two new initiatives for this year. One is the Purchasing Card Program, which will be used to streamline the procurement and payment method for procuring goods and services. We're also facilitating a Facilities Management Program through Grainger's Key Stop. The benefit of this is to provide our plan operations and our building services staff inventory optimization for not only their trades, for their mobile trucks, as well as for the onsite inventory that we, that we handle. It will also help keep, help us better identify, organize, and order products using automation. We continue to track our, our performance to ensure that we are meeting the needs of, of the school system for the offices and schools. As you can see, in 2014, we have, we created 29,000 purchase orders. This year, in 2014, for the first two quarters, we've already processed 14,000 purchase requisitions for the school system. And we're hitting about 94%. Our goal is 96. So we are on track to meet our goals. Under the Purchasing Supply Services, we have Supply Services, Shop Stores, and the Mailroom. They strongly emphasize providing high-quality customer service. We deliver everything from the mail to construction materials throughout the school system. We also keep track of how well we're doing as far as meeting the needs of our customers. If you look at the first slide for Supply Services, in FY14, we didn't quite meet our goals of hitting the 85% for deliveries, but we had some computer issues where products were getting, and orders were getting stuck in the system. But with the help of IT and an outside consultant, our issues were corrected. And now we're on track in FY15 to meet our goals and objectives. Another big component part of purchasing and supply services is MBE, Minority Business Enterprise Program. Here's where we do our outreach to include the vendor community and various organizations to make them aware of the various opportunities that we have here at Prince George's County to participate in our procurement process. Today, actually, right now, between 1 and 4, we are hosting a technical workshop at the facilities building. The vendors will have an opportunity to meet one-on-one with purchasing staff, IT, health services, academics, and building services to talk about our needs and talk about upcoming opportunities and future opportunities for the school system. We also have two outside vendors who will be there as well to, to meet these vendors. One is a surety bonding company, which is very important when they're dealing with construction projects. And another one is a financial company that will help them, help, that is there to help small businesses kind of restructure and be flexible in their, in their finances. This slide right here just kind of gives you an overview of, of what we have done thus far in the first two quarters for procuring our awarding contracts to MBE vendors. And I do have a few statistics, or actually a few numbers I'd like to share with you for quarters 1, 2, and 3. Thus far, we have awarded $63.8 million in contracts to vendors. Of that, 55.5% have gone to minority and women-owned businesses, which is about 80%.
These are interesting numbers. I want you to tell, say them a little slower. I want to write these down. Thank you.
Thus far, we have awarded $63.8 million in contracts to vendors. And F, for 55.5 million, we're awarded to MBEs and women-owned businesses, which is about 80%, and this is for the first three quarters. Out of that, 31.5 million, or 22%, has been awarded to Prince George's County public vendors. And that concludes my presentation. And right now, we'll have Mr. Philip Hughes, Director of Risk Management, to finish the program.
Good afternoon. The Office of Risk Management Workers' Compensation manages the county's risk and exposure to ensure the health and safety of his employees, students, the community, and protects the, the financial assets of the school system. Some of our key management functions are to identify, measure, evaluate, evaluate, and mitigate our risks, returning our employees to work through our Transition to Work Program, and managing the Self-Inurance Fund. I believe you have a handout that kind of gives you an overview of our self-insured fund, how it operates, and the fact that we are a part of a risk management pool, which includes the county government, the library, and the college system. Our goals really are to educate our existing employees and to our new employees about workplace safety and healthy. Again, enabling our employees that have been injured as a result of workers' compensation claims to return to work through our Transition to Work Program and, and improve communication when it comes to workers' comp with our internal stakeholders. This slide represents, if you, if you read left to right, the claims that, the workers' compensation claims that we have received from FY11 to FY15. If we would just concentrate on the workers' comp, because that is our main cost driver, FY15 numbers really represent from July 1st, 2014, to the end of February. And if you compare that to the same period last year, we have actually received 165 less claims. This slide really represents, if you go back to the, the handout that you have, the cost that we have paid back to the Risk Management Fund. As you see in FY13, we spent about $30.5 billion. FY14, $24.1 million. This year, we're at $22.7. And we anticipate that number to decrease next year. Again, looking left to right and concentrating on workers' comp, FY15, looking at an area between July 1st, 2014, and the end of February, we have spent in workers' comp about $11.2 million. Comparing that to the same time period last year, we actually have spent about $2.5 million less. That's a direct result of the reducing workers' comp claims and our ability to bring in an in-house internal workers' comp attorney. This slide really just represents our occupational drivers as to be expected because teachers and our school, our school administration is our largest population. They really drive our workers' comp costs. Our really source of injury that drives those costs are slip, trips, and falls. And this slide really represents, takes those same figures that you've seen on the previous screen and just takes them into percentages. So teachers account for 38% of our total claims.
Excuse me, I think we wanted you to repeat something.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'm just trying to keep up. Y'all go fast, man. Y'all go fast. I'm just trying to keep up. I wasn't going to ask again.
And, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown.
Would you like us to slow down, Dr. Eubanks?
Thank you, leadership.
Don't worry, everyone complains about philanthropies and things.
Before we respond to questions, I would ask that staff of Business Services stand to be recognized. These are the folks who work tirelessly behind the scene to support those who provide instructional delivery and those who support those who provide instructional delivery.
Now we can stay up for questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Wow, that was a lot of stuff. Folks, if you have comments and questions, I got three pages of questions. I'm going to try to, I'm going to go through it again and try to answer some by myself before you get to me. But we will start with Dr. Anderson and Ms. Boston. Anybody else? Please do plug in if you have questions.
I don't have three pages. Regarding the student-based budget, first of all, let me, let me really express my gratitude for all of the work that you do. I, I had a closer relationship this year than ever with a few of your departments. And, and I know the amount of work that you're involved in, the quality of the work, too. So I want to, I do want to commend you for that. And we certainly enjoyed working with Mr. Brown. We, we are enjoying our work with Mr. Brown on the Fab Committee. I do have some questions, though, and, and one is regarding the student-based budget. I, I'm pleased to see the changes in the budget and, you know, we knew about them, but to see the, the numbers associated with those areas is impressive to me. I do wonder, though, why didn't we, we, why didn't we assign a per-student amount to ELL? What do we call it? Yeah, ELL. We have the, we have the number. We have, we have the number, the count, and we have the total amount, but in every other case, we have the per-student amount.
There are 27 different weights. They're driven by whether they're elementary school student, a middle school student, a high school student, their language proficiency level. It gets more into service delivery so that we make sure that we're meeting the student actually, where they are, so that we're funding the staff appropriately. So it, the chart just doesn't really fit, but it's definitely available.
Okay, so there is a range, and we know that there's a range. And if we average even over the range, we get about $1,469. And it's just good for us as a board to know that average. Okay, okay. The, the, the graphs are great regarding the timeliness in responding to contractors. You have a little dip in August. And I should have put a number on the, the, but just a little dip. You know, we're clustering around, great, the 96 percentile, 95, I believe. So what are we doing to kind of remove that lag? This August of, let me get the slide. You had a line graph to depict that. Uh-huh, 515? Slide 15? Okay, slide 15.
Dr. Anderson, I think it's more or less a, a timing thing. It's, you're always going to have that in, in August, where the percentage of invoices that are paid on time tend to dip, not only because you don't have all staff at the school level, you know, people on vacations, et cetera. And also, the peak in accounts payable is also the month before. And so you have a large number of staff also taking vacation in the following month. So it's, it's difficult to, it's always going to be a little lower in, in that particular month.
The graph looks good. I mean, even at the 92nd percentile, I can't find it now, but even at the 92nd, it's, you know, kind of good. But, but it just shows a dip, maybe bigger than what you intended for it to look like.
I can assure you that the, the Accounts Payable staff is very dedicated, and they have good tenure, and they will continue to improve that number. Next time, I can assure you, it's going to go up.
Yeah, yeah, I just found it. And that gets us to purchasing and supplies. You know, you, you, you've, you've gone up in almost every category. Just a couple of times that we kind of go back. But we see a trend of going up, and, and I do want to commend you for that. I, I have a concern, though, on the slide that deals with minority, I guess it's one that deals with minority vendors. We have about $68 million going to various vendors. Let's see if I can find it. Slide 30. You're moving kind of fast for me. I'm trying to get the numbers straight and whatever. But slide 30, okay, here we are. I think it's important for us to know just how much, what is the total amount that we spend on purchasing and supplies? So we can get a feel for the $68 million, so 68-plus million dollars.
And I, we can get you that number.
Huh?
We can get you that number. I didn't bring that number with me.
Okay, so 68 million represents about what percentage of the total amount that we're spending?
It's probably about 40 to 60%. So right now, this is just concentrating on awards. That's not concentrating on everything else that we purchase.
Yeah, but to get the feel for what, what percentage of it or proportion of it is going to minorities, it would be good if we had the total amount and we know what the 67, 68 million really mean. Then in the area-
Can I just ask a question for my own clarity? She mentioned 63.8. Is that the number she's talking about?
Yeah, and that's just awards, contracts that we have awarded.
63.8 million in all contracts awarded? But that doesn't include, I'm just making sure, is that the 68 that you were talking about, the 63.8?
That doesn't include all the spend. That's just the contract.
It's just the contract. It doesn't include all the spending. Do we, okay, all right.
I thought that represented just minority, the amount going to minorities.
That's our total contracts that we've awarded.
We have, okay, so the total of contracts that we've awarded, 60-
63.8 million.
And we're- Wait, 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 wait. I'm trying to get this part straight. Are these exclusive, under the female piece, the $6 million for females, and the 4.5 million for African-American females? Are they disjointed? So, I mean, can I understand that's everybody else?
Yeah, that's separate, yes.
Okay, all right. You know, I'll just work on the numbers.
Okay, and we'll get you the total.
But thank you very much. I really enjoyed the presentation.
You're welcome.
You want some more time? I, I took some of your time, Dr. Anderson.
No, 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 no.
Interfere, you have, you want-
Clared up something for me. I had 68, 63, and-
Good. Thank you. Ms. Boston. And then we have Mr. Taylor, Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Grady, and myself.
Okay.
And Ms. Williams.
I have a couple of questions, not like the chat. I don't have three pages. But I have two.
Actually, it's only two when I look at it. It's only two.
My first question is, is around student-based budget, and I think it's talking about Page 10. I was trying to keep up, too, so I was trying to get the page numbers down. Can you explain to me around the, the Title I? The, in, the, at first, you talked about the increase. We have an increase in, in our Title I population, farm students. What do you attribute that, that increase to?
So a student's Title, Title I status is driven by their free and reduced meal application for, in its effective October 31st. So based on federal guidelines that define- So, based on federal guidelines, that defines whether that student particularly is able to receive free and reduced lunch, and then at the school level, the school has to hit a certain threshold for the school then to be labeled as Title One.
Maybe I didn't ask my question right. What, why is there an increase? What do you contribute to the increase? I think you, on the slide ten, it says that there was an increase-
Oh, just relative to the total district out of the hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and fourteen, the number of free and reduced meal students that we have just district-wide is increasing. So, we're increasing in the number of students that have a varying level of, you know, demographic factors that identify them for additional needs.
We have more poor students now than-
Yeah.
So, we have, yeah, so, we increased about thirty-six hundred students in the last eighteen or nineteen months or so, and they, those students who entered our district have almost identically the same rate of eligibility for farms as students that were already here. So, about sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent of our newly enrolled students are also farms and therefore receive Title One. So, the increase is partly, and I would say a lot's related to the, the actual growth in student enrollment that we have, and it's being parallel or equivalent to the same amount of farm students that we had in the population that was already here. So, there's just some automatic growth as student population grows.
Are we still using the same formula? Because I know in a couple of years, we changed the formula.
We're using the guideline, the federal guidelines, I think are the same this year as they were.
Yeah, the guidelines are the same. We redefine, for instance, whether we use free meal status or free and reduced meal status. So, the county has an app, you know, goes through the federal government's process for, for how we classify schools, but how we classify students is absolutely driven by federal standards.
Okay, so, with the increase, it says it's just gonna be a reduction in allocation what, for pre-pupil, because-
Because federal funding is flat.
The funding is the same?
Yeah, so, it's a year behind, just like everything else. So, this year's money is for last year's students. So, there's always that pinch in the current year, because your enrollment goes up, but it takes the money a year to catch up from the federal level.
So, how are we gonna supplement whatever resources that these schools are getting because they, you know, the increase in this population to make sure that these kids are still getting the same, these schools are still getting the same resources if we're reducing the allocation?
So, in the, so, in this, I mean, there's a couple of issues at, but I think the easiest answer to that is with the budget proposal that we have before the council right now-
Okay.
-we have increased the funding for school-based management, and it is also weighted to things like free and reduced meals, whether you're a special-needs child, you know, the other factors. And so, there's a significant, you know, increase there which will offset, right, that increase through school-based management, because that's all weighted to the same issues that we're talking about. So, I know, and we were at a community meeting last night, and, we were at William Worth last night, and because we were at William Worth, we used their number. So, if the budget proposal passes, they'll see a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars more in their school-based budgeting funding at that school alone next year based on this budget proposal.
Great, great. Thank you. So, my next question is around workers' comp. And I know we have more teachers than we have of any of our employees, but what do you, what is the, the overall claims?
It's matched.
Yeah, the teachers, that we have such a large number of worker comp claims around for our teachers. I can understand bus drive. I definitely get on this transportation, but why is there such a big gap with our teachers?
Well, I think one is, it has to do with the population, which you've already, already mentioned. I think that our teachers are exposed so that they, they're dealing with, with students, and really, one of our main drivers are just slip, trips, and falls. And so, what we've been trying to do is educate our teachers. When they come in the classroom at the beginning of the year, they're setting up their classrooms, you know, they may stand on a swivel chair, a cabinet, something like that may, may cause a fall. And so, what we're trying to do is really trying to educate our population about, you know, identifying potential hazards and either removing those hazards or avoiding those hazards in order to reduce the, the number of claims.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I had a question and a follow-up with the process of how we choose our vendors for Yes, I just wanted to know the process of how we choose our vendors for the school system, and that could be from-
We, we use various methods. We use solicitations, where it goes out to an open bid. Some are consultants, where they come directly from the schools and the offices for PD and various programs that they have in the schools. And others, we use consortiums, where we use awards that have always, already been awarded nationally, but they provide us with the services that we need.
Okay. So, is there certain instances where we would allocate a certain job for the lowest price? Or is it just for a, the business that is most effective?
Well, if, if we go off a solicitation, we, we can do an IFB, which is Invitation For Bid, where we're looking at price as the driver, and that would be the lowest, we look at the lowest cost. We can do an RFP, where we're actually looking at the specifications and the technical requirements of that bid. An RFQ, once again, Request For Quote, is also looking at the price. We know what we want, we just need them to price it out. So, we have two areas where we look at just price, and one where we look at the technical aspect of the bid, of the solicitation or the requirements, and then we look at price.
Okay, I would just like to delve a little bit deeper on the restrictions that, once the school system chooses a vendor, and a school, of course, may find it for a cheaper price. Is that allowable, or one, is it that once the county decides that we're going there, that's what it is?
We have to review it, because you may just be looking, if they find it for a cheaper price, it may just be for one school or one area, and it may be for one time. We have to look at it for the entire school system.
Okay.
So, we do, we weigh it, we verify it, we look at what it is that they're looking at, and we make a determination based on that.
Okay, and I, I'm sorry to do this, but it's, the topic that has been brought to my attention from various schools, as we get closer to commencement ceremonies, a lot of issues have been brought up with the purchasing of the graduation programs. A lot of the schools are saying that there is a specific, we are going in-house to actually create the programs this year, which is costing a bit more than what they would pay for outside services where they purchased the programs last year.
That I can't add. I can say that we do, we've never actually gone out to purchase programs for them or have them procure them outside. This is the first year that we've always, we've seen it. And typically, because this is a print job, it should go to the print shop to assess, number one, if they can do it, and then determine, if they can't, the print shop usually determines if it needs to go outside to an outside vendor.
Okay, so, so there would be no flexibility essentially if it could be produced at a lower-
We would still have to go follow that route and get advisement from the print shop-
Okay.
-on, on how it works, because we've never done it outside.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, and then Ms. Grady.
Yeah, I have a question about budget and management services. On, on slide seven, the, under the where we are going section-
Yes, ma'am.
-you mentioned, the third bullet, you mentioned develop budget documents that meet the needs of staff and government entities. I know we're just still coming right out of this, we're still in this current budget cycle, but can you give a little bit more insight into what that means, what you're thinking about as we go into next year's cycle?
We're trying to find document, as we're going through this process, and we get questions, not only from the board, but from county, from county and even constituents, we're finding things that are maybe not as clear or not as concise or redundant information, things like that. So, we're trying to look at each of these things, comparing with, you know, other LAAs and so on and so forth, that gets us the most concise, yet clearest document that we can do or we can provide to give you all the information that you need.
And we've had this conversation a bit with Mr. Brown, but I would suggest that it's really important, not just for us, but also for the public to know, that I know we're gonna try to, as we go forward, align the budget more to what the strategic plan, now that we do have a five-year strategic plan for the first time, which is fabulous, aligning those categories, because, you know, as a board member who's relatively new, when we did go through the budget, obviously, we were dealing with a previous template, it was a little bit hard to understand, but now that we have the strategic plan, it's really important for us to not just look at numbers on a page and how they fit in different categories, but how are, how is this budget supporting these five areas and these different priorities? And I think, you know, for all the staff that works for, in your office and the other offices that have been presented here today, there's a lot of important work going behind the scenes, particularly in the organizational improvement area around efficiency and, you know, better accounting and tracking, but also, this work is all supporting the, these broader strategic priorities of the, of the school system. And so, hopefully, as we move forward, we can, you know, work with you to make sure that, both in practice and in the, in the way that this is being presented to the public, they understand that we're, we have a strategic plan that we're really serious about and that these budget categories are actually aligning to supporting these different key priorities.
Absolutely.
And then they, and then we can start making judgments about, as a board or as the member of the public, about are we putting enough resources into this area, or are we using our resources well? How are these programs that we funded last year, you know, playing out and supporting our priorities? Those types of questions.
Yeah, aligning our resources with your expectations gives you the information so you can make the best decision, absolutely, and we'll move in that direction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grady?
Thank you again for the presentation. My question is regarding the business operation initiatives. I know there's a list there of what are initiatives to improve performance. With that, were these, did this come out of a finding of some audits that you kinda came up with these particular cases? And my interest was just in knowing, like, for example, you have cashless systems to reduce costs and fraud. Is there, is, I don't know if there's a way, is there, been able to measure, like, how much fraud you, there's the findings of, like, per this year, and then next year, we're looking to do recommendations, or are there timelines that we're looking to, to sort of meet to rectify, things that we're seeing to be a pattern?
Well, the board, selected members of the board, I think it's the Chair, Dr. Maxwell, et cetera, they get reports from the internal auditor-
Mm-hmm.
...and concerning student activity funds. And although this, the amount of funds that this covers is small relative to the entire school system, there's a huge amount of cash that's involved. And you know where there's cash, there's always some sticky fingers. So, basically, what we're trying to do is to minimize this, try to improve how student activity funds are handled. For example, the new online system, the SFO that's been implemented allows online access wherever we are. For example, I could, I could literally click on that school funds online, and I could go to a high school and actually show you what's happening at that high school. And basically, what, when parents pay funds, for example, online, instead of having the bookkeepers go to the bank to deposit, for example, the objective is to get all of those funds online immediately into the program, saves going to the bank, saves teachers' time spending on, you know, dealing with cash, sponsors, collecting. Because once we can make improvements in these crucial areas, then it puts the focus where it really should be, improving things at the district level and making us really greed by choice.
Okay, thank you.
Oops, I gotta get ready. Okay. Excellent, Ms. Williams, go ahead, I'll go af, I'll go after you.
Thank you all again for all your hard work, especially during this budget season, I know was a challenge for everyone. My question is around the student-based budgeting, as always. I see here that you have the early warning indicators, and I don't see where there is, it's something, a subsidy set aside for those that are doing well. I see here that we have the early warning indicators and things like that, but I don't see any, anything going towards those students that are doing the double advance like we had before.
So, in addition to changing kind of just how we look at student data to just one data point, so it used to be just MSA and just HSA, and because of that, in FY fifteen, for instance, only sixteen thousand students were designated as double basic and only nine thousand were double advanced. And at ninety-two dollars and at a teacher's salary of sixty-five thousand, it was such a small amount of students and such a small amount of dollars that it wasn't having an incremental benefit at that level. And when we actually looked at student data, the vast majority of the students being identified were already centralized in tag centers, were centralized in programs that already get additional funding above and beyond just this, this particular piece. Additionally, what we did by changing from the just double basic to the, the new measures is that we increased the number of students from sixteen thousand to sixty thousand. So, now, we're also catching a huge group of students in the middle, and we're also doing it from K to twelve. So, we're able to have a K to twelve solution that really focuses on early intervention, on remediation, and then also for acceleration for those forty thousand, forty-four thousand students that we were just missing in our prior model. So, we're, and we're also increasing the weights for double basic from two sixty-eight to, into the four hundreds. So, we're doing more for more and really trying to do a full solution of intervention and acceleration and enrichment at the same time.
And I think what's most important when it comes to the new weights is that the weights prior to this was driven, as Christie indicated, mainly by just MSA. And obviously, we don't have the MSA scores anymore, and what was interesting when we first implemented our student-based budgeting, MSA does not start until third grade, but we know we have students that need our services in kindergarten. So, it's a couple of reasons why there is a change from the double basic and the double advance from what we're used to.
Yeah, I was just looking for somewhere where it said you would get money to be in the green, to have green students. But I see that you can capture more when you're talking about the yellow students. That, that incorporates more where you have the double basic and the double advance. There was a big group in the middle that weren't even included, so I could see that. The other question is around the school, the small school subsidy. Has that number of students in the population, has that changed any for two thousand sixteen?
So, we have forty-seven schools?
Well, I mean, the, the num, the population in the school-
The population, I can tell you if I look at it real quick. I left it blank.
Because last year, we had if your high school was less than a thousand, your middle school was less than six hundred. Has that number decreased or increased, or?
No, because the number of schools that we actually have falling into the category have increased.
And I was glad to see, although it's a small increase on basic dollars, we get seventy-nine dollars more just for having a student in the classroom instead of thirty-one, ten, it's-
Oh, absolutely. So, the, the base weight and the first and second grade weights were, this was the first year that with the increase in funding, as teacher salaries increased last year, we actually were able to incrementally increase every single student in the building so that we could retain at least the classroom position and the positions of that nature. In prior years, just with flat funding and increases in enrollment and some other things, schools, schools were having to kind of figure out how to make it work. So, yeah, every student is absolutely worth more. Kindergarten and first grade is worth more to lower that class size in those particular grades as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Epps.
Just a quick question about the, the risk management. And it's actually a follow-up to my colleague's question with regard to the slip and fall.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if the, kind of the breakdown, do you have that? Like- Like elementary, middle, high school?
I don't have it on this slide, but certainly we can provide that for you. But it seems to be, in just, in just an overview and analysis, it seems to be really across the board. You know, our schools, excluding our new schools, our schools have basically been built the same. You know, we have tile floors, we've had a lot of weather conditions. And so when we kind of look at our, our losses, not only by occupation, but drilling down to actually to the, the school level, we kind of find across the board that, that it's not something that occurs just at the high schools or just at the middle schools or just at the elementary school. It's something that's really across the board. But for additional data, certainly we can provide that for you.
I was wondering if it's also in any way tied to the, the age of certain buildings? So as like, you know, we have, we have like maintenance needs and we have a maintenance backlog. So I was just wondering if many of those instances or if, if that was even captured, that information was captured in terms of the rate of incidences that happen at older buildings?
You know, I don't, you know, the, the data doesn't really directly tie it to maintenance, though we can say when we're kind of looking at the data this year and looking at the reduction of claims, we can, we can make an inference that because we've closed schools due to weather-related conditions and that with the times that we were, been open, because we've seen less weather-related incidents, then we can directly point to that our facility people have been out salting, making sure that the, the floors have been mopped and they're, and they're dry. And I think that has, has had a direct effect on the reduction.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna try to cut some of my three pages. But this is just great information and really rich and in-depth data. And I'm really interested in how we are really measuring our progress and doing the kind of things to improve. So most of the questions that I have, I think, are associated with that. So I'll start in the business management presentation on Slide seven. There was a goal of improving customer service. I assume our customers are our schools primarily. So what, tell me more about what the plan is to improve customer service and how we will know we've done it?
Our customers, basically everybody that either walks to the door, is sitting in a school, sitting in this room, anybody that we have any interaction with, the constituents, the teachers, parents who call in. We, how we want to improve this is we want to get the information quickly, accurately, and be much more responsive to those needs. So the information that you all are requesting or anybody is requesting is top-notch and accurate. So just through, actually, communication and processes is how we plan on improving customer service to everyone we deal with.
Good. Have you, have you done any even informal kind of sense by asking people, hey, what do you think of us? And then doing some stuff and then asking them later?
Not yet, but that's on, that's on the list of, okay, list of things, yes.
So I want, I want us to do that, really think about how we do that. All right, great. Thank you.
Dr. Eubanks, I said that we're committed to the data-wise improvement process. And those things you mentioned, remember the rings around the coherence framework. Discussions you have have been mostly in the context of academic improvement. But we're looking at that to improve our operational effectiveness. And all those things you talked about were incorporated in that swish in terms of the first eight steps, if you remember that data-wise process. So the kind of things you're talking about in terms of looking at data, what data do you need? Developing an action plan and how will you, how will you know you've met your customer needs are all incorporated in that, and we hope to begin to rolling that out in the next fiscal year.
Great, great. And we, for us, that's really important as we've been going around and talking about the budget. Again, what, what we've heard, not, not just here, but just everywhere is folks want to be able to see that we're doing better in all kinds of ways. And people often, you know, talk about operations, like your operations are inefficient. And, you know, I'm saying, no, they're not. Yes, they are. No, they're not. So I'd like some good data to back that up to really show. So, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. All right. And so moving along those same lines, the, the, maybe it answers it. Let me see if the CFO. So on Slide 10 in SBB, where we talked about rising costs of, of labor, goods and services, what are some of those costs that we're, that we're referring to?
Well, our salaries have gone up every year, so incrementally, just the same time the budget has those implications.
Let me take that right now. Wait a minute.
No, we just have to make sure that the dollars follow the students. So as the classroom gets more expensive, we just have to have it trickle down.
Okay.
So we'll hopefully continue to receive incrementally this year, working with budget and everybody, we, we were able to do that, so.
Right, right. So aside from the labor, are there other kind of significant goods and services costs that are, that are really impeding our ability to?
So I think we just have to look at those school-based services and those contracts and just make sure, as long as, to Brenda's point, as long as we're continuing to push and get competitive pricing and do everything we can to drive efficiency at that level, then I think we'll be, we'll be in a good situation.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I'm an equal opportunity harasser. The business operations on Slide 16. We talked about the, the 90% of, of grant funds awarded, which is, which is good. But what happens to the other 10%? Do we end up having to give money back to the grantees? And so what, have we, do we have data about how much money we're giving back?
We do have data and I, I can't give you the exact numbers right now. We can't provide that to you. But it's been, there's been a dramatic drop. In the past, I've been around for a little, almost nine years, I believe, and it was a huge amount of money that went out the door. It's almost non-existent now.
Okay, that's, we would love to, I'd love to see that kind of, and there's, in several slides we showed over the years. So data like that, because I've heard a lot about how much better the grants management is, and 90% is a good number. But it's even better if you tell me that two years ago it was 70% and now it's 90%. Then, then we, I'd love to see that growth as well.
Sure.
The other thing that, for you on Slide 18, which actually I think is, if I understand you correctly, is exciting about the school bucks system. You know, we get a lot of the school annual audits. And, and it is, the Student Activities Fund is kind of the infamous problem. So are we using now, are we all to school bucks now as Student Activities Fund? Are we almost there? And is it, and is it true that it could, you know, that that single big problem that we always run into with student activities funds at schools could be a thing of the past?
Yes, we've, we've converted all of the high schools, all of the middle and most of the charters. We're in the process of doing the elementaries, which of course, since they're 100 and some, it takes a little longer. In May, we should be done with, with them. And we're restructuring some of the responsibilities. So I think there will be a dramatic improvement. And what will happen is the Internal Audit Office will now spend more of its time on other areas as opposed to so much time with student activity where it does create a problem because, you know, it goes in the newspaper, a bookkeeper has stolen $60,000. It's bad news. But we need to concentrate on the millions and millions of dollars elsewhere. So I think it's, it's gonna have a very positive effect and we look forward to that. And you're getting less of those reports.
Yes, absolutely. I'm looking forward to that. And I, I agree with you. You end up seeing these small problems that end up being the ones that, that nip us in the bud. Two more quick ones. Purchasing on Slide 26. This is small. I'm just curious. Maybe I'm wrong about, maybe this is an understanding question. One of your measures of performance is the number of purchase orders created. Is volume of, of the purchase orders created a good measure? Is it good to have more? I mean, I'm kind of just, I, I was, I was confused by like, yeah, we want to have 35,000 purchase orders.
It's good to have less.
It's good to have less. So, so the number, you want the number to go down?
Yes, that means we're pushing paper versus being with our customers, helping them understand their needs and getting the right contracts.
Okay, all right. So the, so the concept is to have fewer purchases?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. All right. So we're, we're working on that one.
Yes, we are. And that's why we are implementing the purchasing card program for small dollar purchases.
Thanks. And then a little promise, last question, on, on workers comp. And because we've had so much discussion about this, particularly as it relates to our, to our legal funds, and we've really made some good progress in that, in that area. But one of the things we've consistently talked about and our, our board council is gonna help over the next year really help us focus on this area around training. So I would love for you to talk more about, you said we do training for new employees. What kind of training? Who gets trained? What, what kind of follow-up do we have? Not all of that, but just the highlights, a little bit more about the explicit training we do around both workers comp and, and other kinds of, of risk management training that you give.
So last year, we partnered with absence management and we, and we had training through our.
What's the name of them?
With absence management. And we had a training class with our principals, APs and IDs through ERRO. And that really was to understand the workers comp process, absence management, to differentiate the two. And, and during that training, we also talked about risk management. And so some of the things that I've mentioned earlier today about understanding that accidents are avoidable, understanding that, that there are hazards, that, that you have to be aware of your circumstances, be aware where hazards are, try to avoid those hazards. But most importantly, that, that really safety is something that is left to all of us. It's not the Office of Risk Management's responsibility, absence management, our facility coordinators, our custodians. Really, it's an individual thing. When you see a hazard, it's your responsibility to report it or do something about that. So that's one type of training. Dr. Maxwell was gracious to be a part of a video, which we are doing the final edits on, that will be going out to our, to our schools, which kind of highlights how some of the accidents occur in our schools. We call it the first five. It is only five minutes long. We hope that our school-based personnel uses that video and we will try to produce other ones. Use that video in the first five minutes of their, of their, of their meetings to really talk about safety in their place. Another thing that we're, we're doing is that we, we've just established a notification process. So when claims are reported to us, we are notifying the principals or supervisors back, letting them know that a claim has been reported. But we are also sending them, for lack of a better word, an action, after-action sheet, which they can fill out, which gets them involved into the process, looking at why the accident occurred and what measures and steps could they have employed now and in the future to avoid it. And then another thing is just really getting out to our communities. We were constantly running data and where we send, we see, we see trends, working with the, the safety office. We go out to those facilities, trying to find out what's occurring and then educating that population on how to try to reduce their exposure.
More? Oh, bus drivers. I heard bus drivers.
Yes, yes. I thank you.
You don't, you don't whisper that good, Sean. I heard you say bus drivers.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Bus drivers. Bus drivers.
And I think last, in last February, we had it, we had it in service. And so with, with our transportation department, which we got an opportunity to get in front of none of our bus drivers and aides and really for them to understand the workers comp process, understand things they could do to avoid accidents and injuries. And then from the risk management perspective, we talked about what to do if you're involved in an accident, what to do and really what not to do when you're involved in an accident. That is okay to say I'm sorry, but it's not okay to admit liability because that's for the experts to do. So those are kind of, just a few highlights of some of the training that we're doing.
Did it cover it all, Ms. Brown? Thank you. All right, thanks. I don't see any lights for round two. So I think that we are done with our questions. And again, thank you so much. Your folks make you look extremely good. Even better than a three-piece suit already makes you look, Mr. Brown. So, so thank you for, for that tremendous work. All right, we're on to, I believe, item 5.0 on the consent agenda. And I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.5.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items 5.1 to 5.5 require a board approval of proclamations commemorating National Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month, National Caribbean American Heritage Month, a salute to school nutrition employees. And I want to note for you on that one that we have Joan Shorter, I believe, and some of her team here. Is that right? Hell, well, they can't see you. Stand up a minute. There they are. And while you do this salute, I just want to emphasize, you've heard me say these things before, we've got to feed the children, right? We have to feed the children. Just this week, as we returned from spring break, we opened five more Maryland Meals for Achievement Schools. We've been opening them at the most rapid rate in the state of Maryland. We're gonna continue to do it. We're gonna continue to meet the needs of our children that are both, you know, their, their physical well-being, their, their health, as well as their, their academic needs. The five new schools this week, if they happen to be in your, your neighborhood, Lake Arbor Elementary School, Perrywood Elementary School, Potomac Landing Elementary School, Rosaryville Elementary School and University Park Elementary School. And that just adds to the long list of ones that we've already done. And I just want to say they're doing great work and I appreciate that you're doing this salute for them. The next ones are Children's Mental Health Awareness Month and then an approval of property transfer for road improvements to support the Crossland High School auditorium construction project.
Thank you. Colley Smith, a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.5. We have a second. Let's remove a second. Dr. Anderson.
Yeah. I, I want to thank you so much for the suggested actions that you gave in the proclamation for Asian-American recognition and month. And, and I have to read my own notes, but there were two of them that, for which there existed actions recommended by administration for what could be done during that period. And I appreciate a salute in the board meeting to the, to the workers in recognition of School Nutrition Employment Week. It is for the workers. And so I would just suggest some consideration be given to specific actions that could be done. If we're going to proclaim it, let's take some action. What, what else can we do? We appreciate you. And, and perhaps that's sufficient. But maybe there's something else that could be done to recognize the effort, since it is, it's their week, to recognize their efforts and to recognize, to be associated with commemorating children's mental health awareness. What does that mean? If we're going to proclaim it, perhaps there could be some action. It's kind of hard there, but there could be something that we could do to truly commemorate that week, the, the individuals carrying out those activities during that week. And, and again, thanks for the proclamations. I'd like to see actions on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
My comment is along the same, along the same lines as Dr. Anderson. If we could have some examples of the activities that the schools are doing, maybe something that they did last year. If we have pictures or if we put it on the website just to show our celebration and appreciation and the commemoration of those months. Maybe we can put something on the website. And my other question is about the, I guess it's 5.05, the Crossland High School, dedication of the, the property. Are they going to be widening that road? Do you know if they're gonna be widening that road and moving the sidewalk as a part of that dedication or, or what? Do we know?
We'll be able to tell you in just a moment.
I'm an alum of Crossland, by the way.
As part, as part of the construction process to, in order to alleviate traffic, what we're doing is widening the road in front of the school, especially where there's a bus stop right in front of the school. So we're making, we're giving the county room to widen that to make it safer entrance and access to the facility. So yes, we are widening the road.
Okay, do we know when that's gonna happen? Because I know there are a lot of students that walk up that road and?
We, as soon as we get this signed, the process will begin. This is what we're waiting for. We couldn't, we couldn't take action until this happened.
No, I mean the actual work. Will it happen during the school year or during the summertime of year?
That's hard, that's hard to say.
Okay, okay. That was all. But thank you. And I appreciate the, the sketch in there this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epps.
Thank you. I was just wondering with, with regard to school nutrition, how much do we utilize or, and are we planning to increase the utilization of, of? Because I know at like Duval, they, they grow their food and then they use it as part. food, and then they use it as part of feeding. Are we doing that? Are we widening that and broadening that throughout the system?
So I know that, just in this school year, I've been to two, I think, so far this year, of dedications of school gardens that are growing food, either for homeless shelters. I was with one with Ms. Jacobs just a couple weeks ago. And I know there are a number of others. So yes, they're expanding. I just can't tell you that it's, you know, 20 a month or anything, but they are slowly starting to expand. And we've been talking to some organizations that do that kind of work in the community. So I expect that it'll, you know, pick up even more quickly as we go forward.
Is it possible for us to get data on the number of gardens that are throughout the school system at some point in the near future?
We can sure try. Again, I don't think it's a really large number, but I do know there are some out there. But we can get that baseline data.
Okay, and I was just tapped on the shoulder to ask for greenhouses as well.
For greenhouses? Well, I know they knocked them down at Crossland. I used to teach in them, but... Yeah, they're at Gwen Park. I think there's still one at High Point. I can't remember, does Laurel still has one? Laurel still has a greenhouse? I'll get it for you. We can get greenhouses, then we can get gardens.
All right. How many green roofs? Felge, that's it? Just the green?
Edward Felge.
Y'all set? That's it? Thank you. Seeing no other questions, the motion has been made and seconded to improve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.5. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Epps? Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs? Dr. Kaufman? Ms. Kinteros Grady? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ten ayes.
All right, that motion carries. We'll move on to the budget consent agenda. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of budget consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.11.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items 6.1 to 6.11 require board approval of the following. Fiscal year 15 appropriation reassignments, data center maintenance and IT support services, fiscal year 15 second financial review and transfer, award of construction contracts for the work at Gwen Park High School, Elizabeth Reeg Special Center, Barnaby Manor Elementary School, and Fairmont Heights High School, and change orders for work at Edward Felge Elementary School, University Park Elementary School, and Eugene Burrows Middle School, and finally, the May 2015 expenditure requirements.
Thank you. A reminder that student member cannot vote on the budget consent agenda, but I will now entertain a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.11.
So moved.
May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Anderson.
I just want to thank you for the specificity given in the MBE status on the board action summaries provided for this meeting.
Dr. Kaufman.
Just have a question about item 6.2, the financial review. In the expenditure list on page two, about the middle of the page, it talks about special education, non-public placements, meaning additional 11 million for that. I just wanted to hear a little bit about where we are sort of in the non-public placement arena. Is that a significant increase in our cost, or are our costs decreasing? Are we trying to do more to, you know, keep, provide services in the school to serve those students?
The increase is related to, we've had a reduction in the number of students that we're placing, but the costs have grown exponentially. MSD has been granting, I think, 2.5% waiver, I mean, cost increases for the last several years, and our budget just has not been able to keep up with that. So this is kind of like, almost like a catch-up kind of thing to address current needs.
So we both have, the population of these students is increasing, but at the same time, our budget has not increased to keep up with it?
Correct, correct.
And is there anything that we're, do we foresee that this is going to be a continually increasing area, given our capacity to serve some of these students in the public schools, or lack thereof in some cases?
So we're talking to a couple of folks about doing some co-location of additional programs beyond the ones that we do to try to bring down some of that cost. But as you know, special education is driven by the needs of the student. And if there's a ruling that they need a non-public placement, you know, then you have to, you know, figure out which one. And we usually recommend several to them. So, you know, I'd like to say we're gonna bring the cost down. We're certainly doing some work to try to do that. But I don't think anybody can sit here right now and really tell you that we're gonna be able to bring it down in the short term. Perhaps, you know, over several years, we'll be able to get a, you know, a better solution to that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Just, for my clarity, Dr. Kaufman, I misunderstood. Are the number of students being placed increasing or decreasing? The costs are going up?
The costs are going up. We have placed, we are placing less students.
We're placing less students, but the cost is going up.
Correct.
Yes, because of the supported services that are being offered.
All right, thank you. All right, I see no other lights for questions or comments. And the motion has been moved and seconded to approve items 6.1 through 6.11 on the budget consent agenda. Mrs. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson? Ms. Epps? Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Jacobs? Dr. Kaufman? Ms. Kinteros Grady?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We have nothing under the non-consent agenda, and there are no second readers. So we'll move to 9.0, new business first readers. I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 9.1 through 9.12 under first reader.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. 9.1 through 9.10 are for the adoption of a variety of textbooks. And then 9.1 and 9.11 and 9.12 are both first readers on board policy. And as you know, board first readers require no discussion.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept items 9.1 through 9.12 under new business as first reader? It has been moved and seconded. Seeing no comments, all those in favor of these items in 9.1 through 9.12 as first readers, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. There are, the follow-up on 11.0, Ms. Jacobs? I'm sorry, did I? Okay. All right, well, let me just say that there are follow-up items from March 26, 2015, are in board meeting, from that board meeting, are posted in board docs. Now, you have the floor to Ms. Jacobs for an announcement.
Thank you. I'm sure I'm gonna regret having done this, but so oftentimes in the school system, we, families are dealing with their own internal things that we don't know about, don't think about, don't know. And so I am going to do the breast cancer walk, May 2nd and 3rd, and I'm actually doing it on behalf of my...
Now, it's real. You put it publicly, you can't back out.
I know, that's why I'm doing it, so I can push myself to do it. But ideally, I would like to do it on behalf of the families of PGCPS, part of the inspiration. One of our principal's sister is dealing with an issue right now, and so I wanted to add her to the list, but the idea came, I can add families to the list. I'm walking for you on May 2nd and 3rd, and as I pass out, just know that that was the reason I did it. But I did want to do that because I think, again, oftentimes, you know, our staff work tirelessly on behalf of the school district, and oftentimes, we don't know what's going on in their families. And so to that end, I'm committing to doing it for those two days.
Let's give Ms. Jacobs a hand for doing that. Let's go one better and give Ms. Jacobs your checkbook for doing that. Come on, folks. We gotta pledge her, we gotta pledge her to make sure that she, if she's representing us, that we're making sure that our breast cancer research is being well-supported. So I'll make my pledge right now, and right after the meeting, and come see me and take whatever's in my pockets. And I encourage others to do the same. All right. Now, I'll take a motion, colleagues, to confirm actions taken in executive session on Thursday, April 16, 2015. It has been moved and seconded to approve items taken in executive session on April 16, 2015, as follows: personnel appointments, legal matters, and administrative matters. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, folks. That motion carries. Item 13 is a motion to adjourn. It has been moved and seconded to adjourn our 2016 system oversight meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Have a great day. I love daytime, because I'm thinking it is midnight, and I'm looking, I'm saying, still, we still have daylight.
We like them too, Dr. Eubanks. Anytime you want to ask.